All right, everybody. Thank you for your patience. We, uh, we went a couple of minutes over there, but appreciate you, uh, sticking it out with us. It is, it is seven thirty-seven. We are in session. Everybody please rise and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please, Angela.
Laura Houck.
Here.
Sabal Zayed.
Here.
Amy Hi.
Here.
Megan Nolan. Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Kyle Schenk.
Here. And, uh, Angela, if you could please note, Ms. Nolan did email us. She is under the weather this evening, so that's why she's not here today.
Mr. President, I know for the record, we were in executive session with regard to personnel issues with regard, uh, from about six forty-five to about seven thirty-five this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bello. Uh, Mr. Truman, please take it away.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, first up for council consideration, the approval of the October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Ms. Alzayed, seconded by Ms. Houck to approve the October twenty-fourth minutes. Questions or comments from council or the public on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Next up for council consideration, a resolution two thousand twenty-three, twenty-nine, establishing the borough holidays for two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Gundrum, seconded by Mr. Heil to establish the borough holidays for two thousand twenty-four. Questions or comments from council or the public on the holiday schedule?
Um, are we able to do a blanket resolution and just pass all of these at once, all these meeting dates for the year?
Individually.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Next up, resolution two thousand twenty-three, thirty, establishing Borough Council meeting dates for two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Ms. Alzayed, seconded by Ms. Houck, uh, regarding the Borough Council meeting dates next year. Questions or comments from council or the public about that item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Resolution, and next up, resolution two thousand twenty-three, thirty-one, establishing Finance Committee meeting dates for two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have, uh, Mr. Heil made the motion, seconded by Ms. Hi, I believe, uh, regarding the Small Business and Economic Development Committee meeting dates for next year. Questions or comments from council or the public on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Actually, President Schenk, I double, double skipped there. Um, that's okay. That was, uh, resolution thirty-one. This would be for council consideration, resolution two thousand twenty-three, thirty-two. We just did thirty-two?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, resolution two thousand twenty-three, thirty-one, establishing Finance Committee meeting dates for two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alzayed, seconded by Ms. Gundrum for the Finance Committee dates for next year. Questions or comments from council or the public on the Finance Committee dates? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
For council consideration, a resolution two thousand twenty-three, thirty-three, establishing the Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting dates for two thousand twenty-four.
Make the motion.
Again?
Motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Hi, establishing the Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting dates for next year. Questions or comments from council or the public on that item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And finally, for this section, resolution two thousand twenty-three, thirty-four, establishing the Community Events Committee meeting dates for two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Ms. Houck, seconded by Ms. Alzayed, to establish the Events Committee meeting dates for next year. Is this the one that somebody might have questions or issues with? Counsel or the public? No, I'm just joking. Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
All right, very good. And next up for council consideration, authorization to advertise, ordinance two thousand twenty-three, six, amending chapter five thirty-five, fifteen of Bridgeport Borough Code, uh, that section being titled Stop Intersections, to add stop signs on Holstein Street, at Hurst Street, and Green Street, at Fifth Street. Members of council, this is, uh, uh, in response to the discussion regarding, uh, traffic control devices, uh, along Holstein and Green Street, uh, that was held at the last meeting.
And this would then be two signs total, right? Not like four signs or three signs, it's two signs total?
This would actually be three signs total, uh, Mr. Heil. This would be a, uh, a stop sign on
Two on Hurst.
Two on Hurst, or two on Holstein, and one on Green Street.
Well, I'll make a motion to advertise the ordinance.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Gundrum to advertise the ordinance regarding the stop signs in question. Uh, additional questions or comments from council or the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? None, thank you.
If I had a question, can I ask you now? Um, chief, from your perspective, is there a benefit to having a sweep of Bridgeport, like maybe as your officers are going around to start documenting places where it would be beneficial in one sweep to decide whether or not we have a need for new lights, new stop signs, for, um, additional mirrors, for example, because I know this, these aren't the only places where I personally feel that we need a couple more, and I know we move these along throughout the year, but is there a benefit to like an audit, for example, that your department can do for us?
Any other impact that the other officers might already have done, um, as opposed to just, just driving out with that express purpose, I think we can probably gain enough by, uh, by sitting down and, and asking.
Do you think that's reasonable in the next six months, like Q-two of next year, to have some level of like, a report could be a page, just some recommendations from your team?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, uh, I think that we, we could do that definitely within that time period. Um, just looking at the traffic flows, like when you look at West Valley Ford's Road with a blinking red light with, that's been blinking for a long time and, um, but with additional traffic flows during high, high time areas, might, we had to do something with there. And a couple of these other places, absolutely.
Fantastic, thank you.
I know we added that, um, no left turn sign on DeKalb. Was that earlier this year? When did we have that sign?
The fifth?
Yeah, yeah, fifth and DeKalb. That, that seemed to be, I think that seemed to be useful. That was a good suggestion. And I'm sure there's a couple of ones out there.
It was great, and, uh, someone either hit it or tore it down. We just had to have it put back up.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, next up for council consideration, a return of employee and employer pension contributions to a former Bridgeport employee in the grand total amount of nine thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and fifty-six cents.
I'll make a motion to return the contributions.
I'll second, but could we have some context for the public in case there's reason for it?
Certainly, Ms. Alzayed. Uh, this is an employee that, uh, is no longer, uh, working for the borough, uh, departed within the last sixty days, uh, and this is merely a, uh, procedural vote to, uh, for council to authorize, uh, the release of, uh, in this case, uh, defined contribution, uh, pension plan earnings, uh, remitted back to the employee that is, uh, that are, he is wholly entitled to.
Thank you. And I'll second.
And would it be just for the, uh, the exercise in understanding why it has to go this way? Because this is not a bill or salary, anything that goes out of the borough's coffers has to get approved at some point by the folks that are behind the table here, and this is neither a bill nor a salary, so we break it out separately. Does that make sense?
Uh, yes, not only that, President, but above and beyond that, this is money that is, um, that is leaving our pension plan. So, uh, because, because it's not something that is caught on the, the bill roll, uh, and additionally is, uh, pension monies, uh, I think there's a higher comfort level of having the, uh, the, at least the procedural vote for council to approve the release of this money.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. Good to understand why we do it the way we do it. Um, I think the motion was made by Mr. Heil and was seconded by Ms. Alzayed, is that right? Great. Uh, any additional questions or comments on the item from council or the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Uh, next up for council consideration, approval of bills and salaries for the month of November two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Ms. Alzayed, seconded by Ms. Gundrum to approve bills and salaries for November. Questions or comments from council or the public on the bills and salaries for November? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, pay the people, Mr. Truman.
All right, very good, thank you. Uh, okay, moving on. Uh, the Bridgeport Borough presentation of the two thousand twenty-four General Fund and Sewer Fund Budget, uh, draft one for this evening, November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. I always like to begin the annual budget presentation by giving a little snapshot of, uh, two residents, uh, showing them where their tax dollars go. Um, this demonstrates the overall millage rate for the borough of Bridgeport, which is thirty-eight point eight five seven for two thousand and twenty-four, and of those thirty-eight point eight five seven mills, uh, you can see that Upper Marion School District at twenty-two mills, uh, consumes or comprises a little over half of that. Uh, coming in second place is Bridgeport Borough, uh, the municipal millage rate of twelve point two three. Third place at four point two three seven mills is Montgomery County, and then the, uh, Montgomery County Community College, uh, tax millage rate that was enacted within the last decade of point three nine mills. So in terms of real world dollars, what does this mean? Uh, here's an example. Uh, a residential property with an assessed value of one hundred thousand dollars. So in order to figure, in order to figure out what your real estate tax bill will be grand total, you take that assessed value figure, in this case hypothetically, a hundred thousand dollars, and you multiply it by point zero three eight eight five seven. So thirty-eight point eight five seven mills is actually three point eight eight percent and change, and you come up with a grand total tax bill of three thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy cents. And then you can see the distribution amongst the four representative, uh, taxing bodies there. Upper Marion School District gets twenty-two hundred of it. Bridgeport Borough gets twelve hundred and twenty-three dollars of it. Montgomery County gets four twenty-three seventy, and the Community College Fund gets thirty-nine dollars. So again, uh, carrying forward with this hypothetical hundred thousand dollar assessed value property, uh, if you take a look at, uh, Bridgeport's overall cut of that, divide that into, uh, the grand total thirty-eight eighty-five, it equals thirty-one and a half percent. In other words, Bridgeport Borough itself only receives thirty-one and a half percent of every resident's property tax dollar, and that is down from thirty-two point two percent last year, and will continue to decrease every year, uh, provided the county and the school district continue to raise their millage rates while the boroughs remain static. Uh, the manager goals for the two thousand twenty-four General Fund Budget. Number one, first and foremost, uh, to not have to project a structural deficit in the General Fund. A structural deficit is when, uh, because every municipality is required by state law to present a balanced budget, uh, a structural deficit means, uh, having to project the borrowing of general fund, uh, reserve balance money, uh, in order to balance the budget. Uh, in other words, you don't have enough revenues to cover your expenses, so you're borrowing against, uh, fund reserves in the bank. Uh, number two, to not have to recommend a tax increase for the, uh, for calendar year two thousand twenty-four. And just as a note, this will be the fifteenth straight year of Bridgeport not having to increase property taxes. Number three, find a balance between project funding abilities and fiscal responsibility. And number four, continue improving borough infrastructure, amenities, services, equipment, uh, in other words, the, uh, sustain and improve the overall quality of life provided, uh, by the, uh, municipal governing body. So, uh, for two thousand twenty-four, the projected General Fund Budget revenues are going to come in at five million, seven hundred forty-five thousand, four hundred eighty dollars. That figure represents an increase of three hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, or a seven point two percent increase above and beyond the two thousand twenty-three budget figure of five million, three hundred sixty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And here is a pie chart that illustrates where those monies come from. Um, you can see the largest piece right there, the orange chunk. Forty percent of the borough's revenues, uh, come from, uh, real estate taxes at a grand total of two point three oh five million dollars projected for next year. Uh, coming in second place would be earned income taxes at one and a half million dollars, or twenty-six percent. Uh, other miscellaneous revenues comes in third place at twenty-one percent, or just a hair under one point two million dollars. That, that is various, uh, fees, uh, commissions, things of that nature that, uh, that the borough collects on an annual basis. Um, licenses and permits, seven percent at just about four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Real estate transfer tax monies at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand is, uh, in fifth place, or three percent. And then you can see the much smaller amounts of fines, bond proceeds and rent, and local services tax, all right in that one percent vicinity. So to take a closer look at each of the, uh, varying revenue streams, uh, tax revenues are projected to come in, overall tax revenues are projected to come in at, at four point zero four eight million dollars next year. That's up three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars from last year's number of three point seven one seven million dollars. Um, real estate taxes specifically are projected to increase to two point three million dollars, and that is an increase of fifty thousand dollars compared to last year's number of two point two five million. And earned income taxes are projected to increase by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year, uh, going up to a hundred and fifty, or excuse me, one point five million. Now, uh, earned income taxes for the last few years have been, have been trending upwards. Uh, in fact, uh, last year, uh, two thousand twenty-two, we finished at a grand total of one point five two million dollars in, in, in EIT. The year before that was one point three two three million dollars. Um, and this year, it looks like we're going to finish somewhere close to one point five million dollars as well in EIT. So despite that large jump in projected, uh, projected EIT revenue for next year, uh, this has been a trend that the borough has been experiencing over the last, uh, three to four years. Uh, it's just that, uh, you always, municipally speaking in terms of a budget, you try to project conservatively for, for revenue figures and, uh, wait for a trend to develop before you make the decision to increase what you're actually anticipating revenue-wise in the budget on an annual basis.
And, Mr. Truman, I, I greatly appreciate the conservative budgeting. Um, given these trends and the new housing being developed, and the people who are buying homes, um, different from a decade ago, uh, younger professionals, but professionals with higher paying jobs, do you think that this trend is something we can kind of anticipate for the future? We can't really anticipate a rate, but just from what you've seen from people buying homes here, it seems to be more professional, um, jobs, management, whatever, healthcare, especially with CHOP being nearby, like the kind of things they're bringing people here, it's something we can maybe expect for the future.
Oh, sure, President, uh, Vice President Heil, excuse me. Irrespective of, of what the jobs are that these new residents are going to possess, the fact of the matter is, you know, within a three to five-year timeframe, we're going to have a thousand to twelve hundred new residents. Um, and that is ultimately going to, uh, account for a, you know, a relatively sizable increase in our overall, uh, earned income tax revenues. Obviously, there is a cap there that's going to come, a threshold that's going to come eventually, uh, but that in comparison to, uh, the, the, the new residents that are moving into pre-existing housing stock, uh, is, is why we are experiencing that, that current hike at this, the current increases at this point.
And with all due respect to some of our older residents, retired residents, being able to bring in some professionals into those homes, um, when they've turned over, when people move, or the new housing, um, that kind of projection means that we can keep those property taxes flat for the people who have been here for a while. So it's a, sometimes it can be frustrating when you see housing prices go up, or the people buying those homes, but that helps to keep those property taxes lower for people who, um, are retired or older, which is a positive, positive.
Um, I have an additional question. So I recall at one of the meetings passed that you had discussed a bill in Harrisburg that, uh, was regarding the city, um, the Philadelphia City Tax and how we don't get that money back. Um, has there been any update on that? Because I could imagine that we'd get a significant amount more back if that was something that was moving forward.
I don't have an update that I can provide at this point, Ms. Alzayed, but I can certainly check on that.
That's great. I can, I can do the same. I just didn't know if you were keeping track. Cool, thank you.
Uh, moving forward, uh, local services tax, uh, is a projected, is projected to increase by sixty-five, uh, two sixty-five thousand dollars, a nominal increase of three thousand dollars, and real estate transfer taxes are projected to increase by twenty-eight thousand dollars, up to a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, and the sales of new residential development, uh, namely the riverfront, will, uh, will drive this. Moving on to other revenue streams, uh, licenses and permits will remain steady, no projected increase, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. Fines will remain steady at a projected, uh, revenue of fifty-seven thousand dollars. Rental income and interest, a small increase of five thousand dollars, up to twenty thousand dollars and change. Uh, the other revenues, parent category, which consists of grants, non-permit fees, things of that nature, there should be an increase, we're projecting an increase of forty-seven thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars, up to, uh, one point one nine eight million and change. Uh, resulting, this is mostly resulting from an increase in development-related fees, uh, as well as the trash fees being increased due to the contracted rate increase. Before I move on, are there any questions regarding the, uh, the revenues? General fund revenues, I should say. All right. Seeing none, we can proceed to general fund expenditures. Um, this number, five point seven four five million dollars, is identical to the projected revenues because, as currently stated, or previously stated, uh, state of Pennsylvania requires all municipalities to present a balanced budget every year. So we are projecting, uh, the same amount in expenses as we are revenues for next year. And a snapshot to illustrate what comprises those expenses, uh, you can see the largest piece of the pie at forty-two percent, at just a hair under two point four million dollars, is salaries, followed up by insurance costs at nineteen percent, a hair over one point one million dollars, the bright pink pie piece. In the bottom left-hand corner, the dark purple pie piece, utility costs at eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, or fourteen percent, is in third place. Uh, administrative expenses at four hundred and twenty-three thousand, or seven percent, is in fourth. Debt service comes in fifth place, the yellows, the yellow pie piece at seven percent, or uh, three hundred and, just about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars there. And then the, uh, the other sundry items, uh, expense categories you see there, whether it's miscellaneous admin, materials and supplies, repairs, vehicle operations, um, pension expenditures are all, uh, much smaller in the, uh, in the one to three to five percent range comprising the, uh, the overall, uh, pie chart that is two thousand twenty-four expenses. And to run through these briefly, uh, salaries, overall salaries, and then this is for, uh, for all staff, are projected to come in at two point three nine million, seven hundred and seventy next year. That's an increase of two hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-six, uh, four hundred and fifty-six dollars compared to, uh, calendar year two thousand twenty-three. Administrative expenses are projected to come in at four hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. That's an increase of twenty-six thousand, two hundred over two thousand twenty-three. Miscellaneous administrative expenses, and these are namely commissions that we, uh, that we pay to Burkhyma for the, uh, the services that they render for the varying, uh, tax collection services that they provide, uh, are projected to increase by two thousand dollars next year, up to thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. Materials and supplies, we should see an increase of five thousand dollars next year, up to thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Utilities, uh, an increase of thirty-four thousand, four hundred and ten dollars, bringing the two thousand twenty-four line item to eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, and the lion's share of that increase is again from the increase in the municipal trash collection contract. And just to illustrate to the audience and members of council, uh, where we stand in the current trash contract, uh, you can see that in two thousand and twenty-two, going into two thousand twenty-three, we saw a, an enormous increase in the overall, uh, contracted cost that, uh, we remit to Mascaro on an annual basis. It jumped from, uh, four hundred and sixty-six thousand up to seven hundred and forty-five thousand and change, just about a sixty percent increase. Uh, we are in year two of a five-year contract. Uh, the contracted amount that is due to Mascaro next year is seven hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. That's another, uh, four point eight, or basically five percent increase, uh, from two thousand twenty-three into two thousand twenty-four. And because trash, excuse me, trash rates are a pass-through fee, uh, meaning it's not something that the borough subsidizes, uh, we pass these on to residents, uh, in order to pay for this, uh, increase and the overall bill, uh, the residential trash and recycling collection fee will increase next year, going from four hundred and seventy-two dollars annually to four hundred and ninety-six dollars annually in two thousand and twenty-four.
Uh, Mr. Truman, given the increase this year, now that we've had basically a year of that increase, uh, have we had any sort of substantial change either way in terms of collections of trash and recycling? Um, or have those bills been paid at the same rate generally as they have in years before?
Uh, Vice President Heil, that's, um, an interesting question. If you would have asked me that earlier this year, um, even maybe, uh, two months ago, I would say that it, it looked like our number of delinquent accounts was going to spike again, much as it had, uh, had been maybe in, uh, years, in five, six years ago, in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, where we had almost nine hundred thousand dollars in, in delinquent monies due to the borough. Um, however, after looking at, uh, the most recent, uh, financial figures that, uh, Ms. Long put together for us at the end of, uh, October, we have caught up, and it looks like we are projecting to, uh, our, our fee revenues are going to match or, or, or cover the contracted cost for, uh, for two thousand twenty-three. our fee revenues are going to match or cover the contracted cost for 2023. And that would correlate as well with the numbers we're seeing coming from Portnoy, Portnoy, the collection agency that we employ. The first few years that we hired Portnoy, they were collecting a substantive amount of money for us in both sewer and trash fees. However, that has tapered off a little bit this year, and the primary reason is there are fewer trash accounts that are delinquent and outstanding at this point. So hopefully, at this point, all signs are pointing to the fact that we're going to finish 2023 with our revenues, trash fee revenues covering the contracted cost that Mascaro's charging us.
Thanks for having that information, Hanni. That was a very good answer. Thank you, Mr. Truman and Ms. Long for having that available.
Next up, repairs. This is vehicle and equipment repairs, a slight increase of $7,000 going into next year, up to $76,000. Miscellaneous general is the parent category here for expenses. Is comprised predominantly of contributions, the contributions we make to the fire company, to the recreation fund, to the beneficiaries, to the 5K that we do every year. Grand total for this category is $274,000 for 2024. That's an increase of $18,000 compared to 2023. Insurance costs are an increase of $44,220 is projected for 2024, bringing us up to 1.104 million and change. Debt service is holding relatively steady at $379,525, actually increasing by $308 compared to last year. And pension expenses, $128,790, and that is an increase of $21,886 from 2023 to 2024. Members of council, you all have draft copies of the general fund budget, as well as the sewer fund budget in front of you. If there are any questions on the general fund at this point, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Mr. Truman, I know, I think we recently had an item fall off of our debt service list. Is there anything else coming up in the near future, in the, whatever we call the near future, one to three years that we expect to be off of that list?
President Schenk, I don't think we are going to be that lucky. I just looked at debt service a few weeks back. I think the next one that falls off is somewhere in the vicinity of 2030. 2030, 2032. I will, I'll get back to you with a firm answer on that. Next up, the 2024 sewer fund budget. The projected revenues for next year for the sewer fund are coming in at $1.49 million. This represents an increase of $75,000 or 5.3% over the 2023 budgeted revenue, which is $1.415 million. And the, it's relatively steady from year to year. Primary reason or composition of the increase is going to be a continued influx of sewer tap-in fees related to the new riverfront construction, along with the addition of new residential sewer users driving this projected revenue increase. And not much more really, not much more really to project or to elaborate on insofar as revenues, so we can go into the sewer fund expenses. What are we spending that $1.49 million on in 2024? And here is a chart illustrating that. The largest chunk is, again, payroll at 30% of the overall budget, $450,000. However, professional services, coming in right behind it at $430,000, comprises another 29% to 30% of the overall budget. And not too far behind that is utilities and supplies at 26% or $383,300. And then a distant fourth is bond service, or debt service, bond payments, at 13% or And then the intermunicipal sewer rental agreement that we have with Upper Marion Township comprises a very small percentage of the overall budget, 2% or $25,000. So to look at these specifically, salaries are projected to increase to $450,130 or an increase of $31,130 compared to last year's budget. Debt service is going to hold steady, much like it did in the general fund, a slight increase of $190 compared to 2023. Utilities and supplies, an increase of $27,000 and change, up to $383,300. And another relatively modest increase for professional services, up to $430,220, an increase of $16,570. And again, members of council, you have copies of the draft budget in front of you. I am prepared to entertain any questions you may have on individual line items.
What's the inter-fund balance, excuse me, meaning the number that the one fund had borrowed from the other historically that we're paying back now? I know that's one we cover most years.
So, President Schenk, that number increases, that number increases on an annual basis because as we go through the calendar year, excuse me, must be contagious. The, I know. That number increases as we go throughout the year because there are certain bills that the general fund covers and subsidizes for the sewer fund as we go throughout the year. And then at the end of the year, myself, Ms. Long, and our auditors and accountants kind of pow-wow and figure out by what dollar figure it did accrue, how much that due-to-due-from accrued on an annual basis. And then we perform a lump-sum transfer from the sewer fund back to the general fund to pay for those monies that the general fund was subsidizing. I believe the, and once we clear that out, then we have the true number remaining. I believe that true number remaining is somewhere in the vicinity of $1.1 million right now.
I know we've been chipping away at that responsibly and steadily for the last couple of years. I was just curious what was. I didn't see it up here. Thank you.
Yes, sorry for the long-winded answer. All right. Seeing no further questions, I will, the next meeting, we will have the final draft budget prepared for consideration and adoption.
Do we advertise the budget now? Can we advertise the budget?
Yes, you know, a motion to advertise it would be in order, yes.
Then we can vote to approve at the next meeting.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to advertise, and again, appreciate all the staff, auditors, everyone involved with keeping it as it is. It's very impressive that we've grown the way we have, and it's a result of everything. It's not one person's doing it. It's not even just all the result of the staff and council, it's the people of Bridgeport who make it a place where people want to build a business and bring in new homes. So I appreciate everyone being all in together. With that little bit in mind, again, I would like to make a motion to advertise the 2024 budget.
A second.
Motion's from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Gundrum to advertise the budget, as just shown by Manager Keith. Questions or comments? Mr. Heil, and Ms. Gundrum, to clarify, the motion was to advertise both the general fund and the sewer fund budgets, correct?
Yes.
Correct? Excellent. All right. So any other questions or comments from council or the public on both of those budgets? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you.
All right, moving on, unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business for this evening? All right, seeing none, we can move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports to share? All right, very well, we can go to the mayor's report. Mayor Jack's here.
Thank you. Just had a few things this evening. I wanted to thank everyone who was involved in planning and executing the festive lights and holiday shopping village this past Saturday. It was, as always, a wonderful time in the holiday season, and I was glad that I and everybody else at attendance were able to enjoy everything it had to offer. So thank you. This is a reminder that I'm going to be hosting my monthly office hours in my office, which is on the first floor of Borough Hall. That's going to be on Thursday, which is November 30th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., if you'd like to drop in and chat about anything. Finally, as today is Giving Tuesday, I wanted to take a moment to encourage all of our residents who are able to support exceptional local causes that give back to Bridgeport and surrounding communities. Please consider donating shelf-stable goods or money to our Little Free Pantry or the Upper Marion Area Community Cupboard to help make a lasting impact on our neighbors in need this holiday season. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Jack's here. Moving on to the chief's report, Chief Beretta.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank Wawa for helping to host the Gobblers on the Chief, to help those people if they didn't have enough for a meal. I'm just sorry that more people weren't able to get that outreach, but thank you very much to Wawa for that. We had a couple issues. We had a unit block of West Front Street. We made an arrest, and we're expecting to make a couple more arrests involving a disturbed property. The rest will, I'll report next time. Training, I'd like to thank CSI. We're, we just did two large changeovers in our training. The first, this is five years in the making, switching our reporting system over from Metro Alert to Records Management System. It sounds like it's a small thing until you've changed something, you try to change something you've done for 25 years the same way, and it's a massive undertaking just in itself. So we're managing our way through it in the next couple of days, so it'll be a lot of work just doing that. So if you see any of the police officers, just pat them on the back and say, we'll get there. Also, would like to thank the firearms trainers, Sergeant McLaughlin and Sergeant Flora. We just swapped over and completed our defensive tactics and our training with our new firearms, and that went very well. And you can see from the numbers that that's going to be an excellent tool to help police officers stay alive in the worst of circumstances. Like to thank Sergeant Flora and Officer Sted for the No Shave November, where some of us have been mistaken for Santa Claus during the Festival of Lights. And we'll be giving that monies to a charity forthcoming. We'll make that response next time around. Also, hopefully for next time, for those people that have supported Mr. Les Neary Senior and Mr. Bob Granieri from the Depot Street Bar, they've been fixers in Bridgeport for a long time, and in the area running bars and nightclubs, we'll have something for them, hopefully for December of the 12th meeting, thanking them for our food security programs that they've supported for four and a half years. I can say that just doing some simple numbers, that over 6,000 meals were brought forward because a couple people cared in one place. That's just a few people in one place, so it's something to look forward to next time. It's cold out. You see there's Code Blues going out there, so if there's, you see people out, you want to direct them to some local sheltering. The one place that's local, the local transit center in Norris Town, is open because it's a 24-hour operation. A lot of people will go there. And also to continue with the food stuff, if there are some issues that people have with food security, if you know of a family that's having an issue, it might be even for a temporary thing. Our partnership with Mom's Meals has been fantastic for the last several years, as well as making sure that we get those people's information to the Upper Marion Community Cupboard for a longer-term help besides the Little Pantry, because it's getting cold now and those food security issues seem to creep up. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, chief. Moving on to new business. Are there any items of new business to discuss this evening? Excuse me, very well. We can move on to open forum and announcements. Any announcements for this evening? Okay, then, finally, public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak this evening? Seeing none, council could certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
A second.
Hey, there we go. It's 8:22. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.